Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no minutes to approve, correct?
Yes.
City manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
First item is the Thanksgiving food drive. We're supporting the Hackensack Rotary, the donations. There is a location at City Hall, Hackensack High School, Hackensack PD, and Rudy's Restaurant. And that is until November the 14th. I encourage all of you to participate in this, obviously, this time of year, and with the unemployment the way it is, people are utilizing the food banks. Also, Health Department. Public should note, we have our annual rabies clinic Thursday, November the 6th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the DPW Garage, and that's located at 120 East Broadway. Secondly, the Cultural Arts Department is putting on the play called Spitfire Grill. That'll be presented at 38 Broadway, starting October 31st, and it'll play until November the 16th, Fridays at 8:00 PM and Sunday 3:00. Check the website for details, under the Events tab on our website. We also have Make a Difference Day. This is an annual event. It's Cleanup Hackensack Day. That'll be this coming Saturday, October 25. If you come early, you can pick up a muffin and coffee at Java's Brewing, and there will also be pizza at the Cultural Arts Center on State Street at lunchtime. So if we supply the gloves, a shirt, and a place to go pick up garbage. So if that is in your interest, we encourage you to come. Also, on that same day, October 25th, we have a Hackensack shredding event. That's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a Hackensack recycling center located at 15 Green Street, and that is for residential use only. No businesses, please, and the materials will be shredded on-site. So if you're worried about getting rid of your quote-unquote "classified identification information," this is a good time to take care of that in a safe way. The best practices of 2015 mayor council that has been sent down to Trenton to the Finance Board, we have met the enough positive criteria to receive state aid. We had a couple hurdles to get over, and we've jumped those, so we are in good shape with that. Ebola and intravirus. Just going to read a statement. City of Hackensack is working with the Hackensack University Medical Center of Bergen County and state officials regarding Ebola and the intravirus D-68. We've had a lot of questions and interest, and we appreciate contacting the city with your concerns. We will make every effort to keep you informed as new information becomes available. We ask that you check our website regularly, and if you want further updates, you can subscribe to NEXL and SWIFT 911 or the web search alerts. Please see the information on the website. There is a comprehensive list of information that's been put together by the Centers for Disease Control. It basically is very easy graphic form. How can you get it? How can you not get it? And that's based on the latest information. I know I saw some changes recently. So the main thing is that if you have any symptoms, if you do call up or go to the hospital, the main thing is to identify your symptoms to the first responder or to the caregivers. And I've been asked to go through a PowerPoint presentation that I presented at the Committee of the Whole, or known as the COW, which is when the manager does bring up topics of discussion for the council. So, staff has looked at a financial analysis of the City of Hackensack, specifically the Johnson Public Library, and let's get right into this. Now, this is all based on factual information that the finance officer has put together and staff has put into a PowerPoint. First slide is showing, based on 2008 through 2014. Now, the minimum library appropriation is calculated and actually is required under statute when they created libraries. It's one-third of a mil, which is based on the equalized assessed value. The next, so that library for 2014, the requirement from the state, the minimum that the city would be required to give the library is $1,758,253. And then you can go right down that column and see through 2008. Now, there's an optional column, which is called Donation. That is additional funding that has been placed in the City of Hackensack budget, based on the municipal budget that the council votes on, based on an analysis and submission from the city manager's office. At introduction, then, the council then goes through the budget. You can see that in 2008, the contribution, additional contribution or donation was $105,512. And you can see that it steadily climbed. 2014 was the second highest year. Obviously, the last column total is the addition of the library appropriation by statute, and then the donation from the council, based on the budget, based on your taxes. Now, I'm a picture guy. This is a bar graph indicating that the blue is the minimum donation, or the minimum by statute, which is the blue. The purple is the donation, or the additional funding provided in the budget. And obviously, the light-colored tan is the total of those two. And you can see there's some variation. I think that actually shows it easier by number than by the numbers. We also looked at surrounding municipalities, ones that were comparable to Hackensack, and we did a range from Hackensack. You can see the list: Teaneck, Fort Lee, Fort Fairlawn, Paramus, Mawaw, Ridgewood, Lodi, Garfield, Englewood. And we looked at population, and then we looked at the library's budget, and then we looked at the municipal donation. You can see, in this category, out of the towns that we looked at, three towns did not give any additional funding. The second highest is Fairlawn. They gave $867,350. They have a relative population of 32,457. Paramus gave 136,391. However, their total budget, if you look at that, is $3,021,168, and they do have two libraries. So that would be the closest as far as funding goes. And they obviously have a different ratable base than Hackensack does. We then did a relative comparison, and since the numbers were a little bit skewed because of the population numbers, as far as making the bar chart look like anything, I had Albert Dib modify that, and you can, this is a relative comparison of those. The population is in blue, the library budget is in purple, and then the library budget is actually the statutory requirement, and then the tan is the municipal donation. Funding per capita, you look at population and then the municipal donation amount, and you can see that Hackensack falls under number three, based on the number of citizens and the amount of donation. We are number three. Bergenfield pays slightly more, and then Fairlawn pays about $4 more, $4.50. You can see, Paramus is at $5.18. Remember, they're different structure as far as their ratable base. The council's goal has been to look at redevelopment as a way to change our financial picture, and obviously, long-range plans mean more money, which, if the tax base goes up, the requirement, the minimum requirement for the city goes up proportionately. That's why redevelopment is extremely key for the future plans of Hackensack. Again, this is the funding per capita, and again, the purple is the additional or the municipal donation, the blue is population, and the tan is the per capita in dollars. Just for the public, this PowerPoint was put together as information. These are all based on facts. All the information was taken off of the state website, and then compared to each individual municipal websites. All their budgets are required to be put online, as it's Hackensacks, and the CFO did do a lot of work in creating the information. And the key here is communication. The key here is understanding the budgetary issues, and what other communities are spending on the library. I can say, from my personal experience in the other communities I've worked at, the Hackensack Library is a great library, and it has been supported by the council over the years. And I'm sure it is, I know one of my goals is to make this, these next couple of years, which are difficult, as far as the budget goes, we all know of the tax appeals and the reducing of our ratable base, based on those tax appeals. We're going to do everything that we possibly can to keep the funding at least in a position where the library can continue to have the doors open, continue to function. Doesn't mean that there may be some pain. As in every department, there will be, there will be changes, which the CFO and I and the Finance Committee are beginning now to look at, as the department budgets are being formulated. And once we get the year-end numbers, we'll know where we stand financially. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. If you have questions, please ask me.
I have no questions. Just, I'll wait, when we do public comment later, and then speak after that. You will go into, thank you very much for that presentation.
We did have some handouts for those who got here early, obviously got them. So if you have one, pass it around, please.
Resolution 388-14.
Resolution 388-14 is the final adoption of ordinance number 33-2014, an ordinance authorizing and approving the City of Hackensack's vacation of a portion of the public rights of way identified as Jefferson Street, and authorizing the transfer of the city's property interest in this name to the county of Bergen. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion open to the public, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance, on this ordinance only, please come forward.
Mike Senna.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry, folks. Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 33-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you need a motion.
Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
That's my fault.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 389-14.
That was for final adoption for ordinance number 34-2014, but we pulled that right before the meeting.
We're pulling that one, correct. Moving on, resolution 390-14.
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 36-2014, an ordinance amending Chapter 170-50, no parking section, and the Chapter 170-51, no parking certain hours of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion open to the public, please.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offered. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And we need a motion for the...
Motion to adopt?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 36-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 391-14.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 37-2014, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing the improvement of engine company two firehouse phase two, and appropriating $200,000, and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the general capital improvement fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 37-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 393, I'm sorry, 392-14?
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 38-2014, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing purchases of Department of Public Works equipment and related improvements, and appropriating $400,000, and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward to the podium, and give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 38-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution 393-14?
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 39-2014, a bond ordinance providing for the city's combined sewer separation project, buy-in in the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating $4,100,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,100,000 worth of bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 39-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 394-14?
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 40-2014, an ordinance adopting 210-214 Main and 210 Moore Streets redevelopment plan, governing Block 311, lots 14 and 16, and Block 302, Lot 2. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and now calls for a public hearing.
May I please have a motion to open to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Evening.
Ms. Magachi, 166 Catalpa Avenue in Hackensack. I read the details of this in the newspaper, and what you plan to do. It sounds like there are about 350, approximately, units that are going to be built in the heart of Hackensack. Now, 50 years ago, one of the biggest problems Hackensack had was no parking, or not enough parking. And here, we're bringing in 300 and some odd units, with at least 350 more cars, and all we're going to provide is 168 parking spaces for all of these people? Is this going to be adequate?
That's not correct, Ms. Magachi. But go ahead.
How is that? How is, how...
The original project for the first two phases is 168 spots, and then on the second, on the Moore Street project, that also has another, whatever, they have plenty, they actually have more than enough parking for the apartments, plus some for the retail, with all the parking they're going to have when the project's finished.
It'll be equivalent to at least the number of units that we have?
Absolutely, yep.
Because...
The minimum in the rehab plan is 1, 1.2? Or 1?
I think the 168 spaces are for less than 140 units.
Right.
So it's a little bit more than 1. Those two phases, the first two phases are less than 100, about 140 units, and 168 spaces are for that. Then the back part that you're talking about, that's Phase 2. That's the part that's going to be Mortar River. That's where the bigger building's going to be, with the 200-plus units. They will have their own parking, that's separate from the 168. Phase 1 is just what you see on Main Street now, 210, and next door. So I think there's like, under 100, around 190-something units in the old People's Trust Building?
Yes.
And like, another 40 next door.
I see.
And they're actually, it's really kind of neat, they're actually doing these automated garages, like the Carousel, where, you know, so they get them, they maximize the amount of space they need for the parking.
Okay.
It would be a little scary if we were trying to do it in...
Yes!
I agree with that.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 40-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 395-14?
Resolution 395-14 is an introduction of ordinance number 42-2014, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 70 entitled Schedule 21 Parking Meter Zones. We need a motion.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 42-2014, as introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on November 10, 2014, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached, at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage. when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution three ninety-six dash fourteen.
Three ninety-six fourteen is a resolution authorizing renewal of membership in the South Bergen Municipal Joint Insurance Fund.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three ninety-seven dash fourteen.
Three ninety-seven fourteen is an award of bid for the contract for Firehouse Number Two Rehabilitation to Fine Wall Cooperation.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three ninety-eight dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence without pay for two months for Pablo D. Cologne, sanitation department worker, beginning October fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and ending December fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three ninety-nine dash fourteen.
Is a resolution supporting sustainable state funding for preservation and stewardship of open space, parks, farmland, and historic sites in New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four hundred dash fourteen.
Is a resolution for renewal of a liquor license for liquor license number zero-two-two-three dash four-four dash zero-six-six dash zero-zero-four for Barbara A. Edwards, Esquire, trustee for eighty-eight Capital.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-one dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution number four-zero-two dash fourteen.
Is a resolution to rescind Resolution, Resolution number three-seventy dash fourteen, an authori, authorization for dedication by Ryder for Snow and Storm Debris Removal Trust Fund.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-oh-three dash fourteen.
Is a resolution for the authori, authorization for dedication by Ryder for Storm Recovery Trust Fund.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-four dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the city of Hackensack for an additional tax appeal attorney.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-oh-five dash fourteen.
Is a resolution to rescind Resolution number three-sixty-two dash fourteen, authorization for the relocation of a bus stop on Main Street by New Jersey Transit.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-six dash fourteen.
Is a resolution calling for certain rail safety measures in Bergen County.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-seven dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing Recreation Board appointment of Thomas Elias.
I just wanted to check something on this, on the, the...
You know, is the rep board five years?
Yes.
Rep board was five years?
That's what we looked up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah?
We checked it this afternoon.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-eight dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the appointment of an alternate member to the planning board, Gary Tizano.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-nine dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for the Hackensack University Medical Center Foundation.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four-zero-seven dash fourteen.
Is the payment of bills. The current fund is three million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Total expenditures is five million three hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents, and intra-funds and transfers is a hundred and two thousand five hundred and twenty thousand fourteen cents.
May I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Offer.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Yeah? Let me just go ahead and count. Okay. Before I open to the public, we know we're here for library discussion tonight, it's quite obvious. Everybody's going to get five minutes. I'm going to ask, because we're going to put a limit on the meeting tonight to stop at ten o'clock, that gives us over two hours, so, but when you come up here, think of your fellow citizens that want to speak, if, just to, you know, so everybody gets a shot, try to, try to keep your comments to, you know, under five minutes if you could. And can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Take them.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Linda Flynn, four-eight-two Summit Avenue. Good evening, City Council members and residents of Hackensack. I'm here tonight as the president of the Board of Trustees for the Johnson Public Library, and I'm here to update for the citizens of Hackensack our camp, campaign to save the library. A special thanks goes to Kathleen, Deputy Mayor Kathleen Canestrino, for attending our Board of Trustees meeting last week. Her presence gave the library trustees an opportunity to clarify our expenses for the city and to explain to us, for her to explain to us, the circumstances that led to our two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-hundred-thousand budget cut for two thousand and fourteen. We expressed our concerns about the lack of the communication from the City Council prior to receiving the notification letter regarding the large reduction in our budget. Firstly, I want to make sure that everyone understands that the library is not in danger of closing its doors at this time. The board's concern is about the future and how continued budgetary cuts may affect library services in the years to come. For example, we may have to reduce our operational hours and maybe some of our adult programming. We have not had any budget cuts from the city in a number of years. It is most unfortunate that this City Council found it necessary to reduce our funding and put the library in a situation where we are in a shortfall. When we received the notice of our initial one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar cut, we were prepared to hold the line. Our plan at that time was to review our operational budget and make some hard decisions as to where we might reduce our costs. But the second one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-dollar reduction took our breath away. We immediately faced, were faced with a deficit that would require us to use a significant portion of our reserve funds to cover the budget shortfall. The library has always been financially responsible with the funds provided by the city, and over the years, we've made great strides in preserving our historical building and increasing our services to the public. We are not sponsoring a crusade of panic. A petition drive was initiated to inform the public about this year's budgetary cuts and to gain community support and to help prevent additional reductions in the coming years. The public response from the community was overwhelming with over two-hundred, two-thousand five hundred signatures. The Johnson Library has evolved into a prominent community center that supports lifelong learning, provides access to technology, and is a beautiful repository of books. In an average month, fifteen thousand people walk through our doors to check out books, DVDs of movies, and audiobooks, and to use the computers. Also, approximately six thousand additional patrons visit the website annually to download digital materials such as eBooks and music. Some of the library programs then include educational presentations, technology access and assistance, bilingual classes, job searches, and activities for the children and the teens. The ongoing goal of the library has been to continue its efforts in improving the quality of life for the residents of Hackensack by steadily increasing the service that we have available for them. The Library Board of Trustees genuinely wishes to join the City Council in its vision for a renaissance of Hackensack. Our one-hundred-and-thirteen-year-old historical building is the jewel of Main Street and is poised to play an important role in the revitalization, revitalization of the downtown area. Already, our evening programs are bringing people into the area and who then patronize our local restaurants and shops, thus stimulating our economy. Every member of the Board of Trustees has taken a sworn oath to preserve and protect the library. We, as the guardians of this institution, have, are, have had our actions, have been just to, intended to protect and maintain the level of services we currently provide the city and hope that we can continue to do so in the future. We were happy to learn that the City Council recognizes that the Johnson Public Library is a community center that will play an important role in the city's renaissance movement. So in conclusion, the Library Board is optimistic that the City Council will sustain and enhance their support for the library as we move forward to this bright vision of the future of Hackensack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tony Marsalia. Hackensack has been my home for fifty-nine of my eighty years and forty-seven years on Ross Avenue. I am the vice president of the Hackensack Library Board of Trustees. Mr. Mangan has created an impressive Q and A outlining, in part, the past funding of the levels and comparing the funding of various libraries in Bergen County. The PowerPoint display also did the same, and it was very well done. There's no question that the, the councils of Hackensack and the city of Hackensack have supported the Johnson Public Library for many years, so that, that is not at issue. With your permission, however, I would like to respond to parts of the, related to the Johnson Public Library current financial position and outlook looking forward. To that, I will refer to the library's two thousand thirteen audit report. The audit shows that on December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, the library had assets of one million eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Those assets are divided, one million forty-five thousand in restricted accounts and seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in unrestricted accounts. In his Q and A, Mr. Mangan incorrectly combines part of the restricted funds with the unrestricted. I will explain. The restricted funds are divided into five accounts, which in view of the trustees are not available for regular operating purposes. Two of the accounts are derived from taxpayer money and three from other sources. The two derived from taxpayer money are the terminal leave account and the capital account. The terminal leave account sets aside funds in anticipation of library, libraries' contractual obligations to employees when they retire. I hasten to add that the library kept terminal leave at fifteen thousand dollars long before it became law. The capital account was created in two thousand eleven. Seven hundred thousand dollars was transferred from the then-available unrestricted reserves in order to begin to address repair and upgrading of the needs of the library's one-hundred-and-thirteen-year-old beautiful building. A, a building study conducted by architect Anthony Ivino in two thousand eleven resulted in thirty-three findings of an estimated cost of one million one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The capital account was created to begin to address those needs in a five-year plan, minimizing the need to go to the city for capital funds. By December 31, 2013, $187,000 net had been spent for capital project. The audit report shows $513,000 remaining in capital amount, but with more than $900,000 remaining in projected capital expenditures. As of this date, we have $495,000 in that account. The other three accounts are derived from tax -- are not derived from taxpayer money and are not available for regular operating expenses. They are labeled endowment, donation, and paver accounts. The endowment is derived from the original donation of $48,000 and the interest gathered over the past 88 years. The auditor separates the account into spendable and non-spendable to differentiate the original contribution, which stipulates may not be spent. In the board's view, it would be unconscionable to use endowment funds gathered over 88 years for a single year's operation. Endowment funds must be reserved for special projects or costs which are well outside normal operations. The smaller donation account is likewise unavailable for regular operations. Those funds are derived from large and small donations made by patrons over the years, sometimes with stipulations as to how they may be used. The paver account, which is less than $2,000, is derived from the sale of the pavers that are installed in the courtyard. Now that leaves us with the $782,000 in unrestricted funds, which includes $16,000 labeled "Library Special Account." This latter, $16,000, are funds which could, in the extreme, be used to set aside to address obligations to other libraries in the Bergen County library system and may arise due to the loss of books and materials by Hackensack residents. The remaining $766,000 includes $133,000 in operating balance from the 2013 budget and $633,000 in reserve. In 2013, the library received a municipal appropriation--
Excuse me, Mr. Marselia? Just try to wrap it up because you're over your five. All right?
Well, I'm up to the most important part--
All right. Let's--
--Mr. Mayor.
Just bring it up quick. Thank you.
I'll try to wrap it up as quickly. The city asked -- our budget in 2013, the appropriation was 2013, was $2,957,000. The city asked that the 2014 budget be based on the municipal appropriation, the same municipal appropriation, and we and the library agreed to that amount. We anticipated, with anticipated costs in 2013, $3,100,000. The bulk of the $133,000 was planned to be appropriated to the 2014 budget. I will cut to the chase because of time. The issue is this: We will, in 2014, because of the cut, have a shortfall of $198,000. This will cut our reserve down to, from the $766,000, to approximately $568,000. When we move to 2015, if the appropriation remains at $2,717,000 or $240,000 less than we began with, we will have a shortfall in 2015 of approximately $300,000. Now, the option open to the Board, the Board of Trustees, will be either to use up our reserve and bring it down to less than $300,000, which is well below the 20% that is permitted by law and which is recommended by the state library, or to cut something of that magnitude in terms of our programs. Now, to cut $300,000 or anywhere near it will require cuts in either services or that is in quality or in quantity in terms of how much time we can keep the library open. That is our concern as we move forward. We have been promised that decisions for future funding will be made in a meaningful consultation with the Library Board and staff. And so as I end my tenure as a trustee, I hope that those consultations will result in meaningful compromise. I thank you.
Frank Albelino, Hackensack, New Jersey. And I guess by my T-shirt, you know one of the comments I'm going to make. I think, based on the presentations just now by Mrs. Flynn and Mr. Marselia, I think you have to go back to the drawing board, take another look on what you're doing, because it sounds like the library will be in bad shape. The other comment that I have is I was here in September, and I asked Councilwoman Greenman a question when she went down to the local finance board on Wednesday, August 13, in New Jersey, if she spoke against the city receiving the funding to pay the back taxes, the tax rebates that year. She said, "No, I did not." So I went online, because two residents after me said, "No, I was correct. You were wrong. You did speak against it." So I went online and I got my backup. Okay? And Mr. Thomas Neff was the chairman that day, and it was on August 13. And he said, "Why don't we start with Hackensack?" I would ask that the people -- I only want, I'm sorry, I only want people at the table in favor of the application right now. We'll hear them. Then we'll hear the people who want to oppose it. Mrs. Greenman said, "We're all in favor. We just have to tell you about the application." Mr. Neff said, "Anyone at the table, everyone at the table is in favor of the application." He asked a question. Mrs. Greenman said, "Just to be truthful, I don't know if I'm in favor or not. I want to bring out facts." Mr. Neff said again, "He only wants the people to speak at the beginning of the meeting that are in favor of granting the bond request to the city," as the deputy mayor knows because she was in attendance that day. Mrs. Greenman, Mr. Neff says, "Again, I only want people, right now, who are in favor of this application. If you have nothing to say in favor of it, then we will bring it up a little later. If you have something to say in favor of it, that's fine. If you don't know, then you can sit in the audience. If you still want to testify, you can testify, and we'll hear it." And your response was, "All right, no. No to me means you aren't in favor of it."
You said, "Just in the beginning"?
I'm sorry, I'm still speaking. You also go on to say that the other members of the council are retired and they don't have a license. I'm assuming you mean that you're a lawyer and you have a license to practice law and they don't have a license, that they did not understand the contract with the police and they had to rely on the professionals. All of you have to rely on the professionals. That's why you hired this gentleman and these people here and all the other professionals that work for the City of Hackensack. You have to rely on them. So I'm disappointed that you just weren't truthful with me?
I was truthful, and you can, you just read--
No, you spoke at the second part, and you spoke against it.
And I, no, I asked for oversight, did not ask, and I understand that the city is obligated to pay our obligations, and I absolutely agree that we must get funded. What I asked for--
That's now what this transcript says. 188 pages--
We can argue about it, but I can, I--
Excuse me, but this is my time? You're cutting into my time.
No backing for now, guys. Go ahead, Mr. Albelino.
Thank you. "I happen to be an attorney. The rest of the council are retired people, not professionals, have no license." I don't think that was the right thing to say about these people. They were elected like you are.
No license to lose. No license--
No, 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 no. Do you understand, I ask you a question. Do you understand the pay grid now of how the police works with the columns and the steps?
Sir, I'm not going to argue with you.
No, no, I just said, "Do you understand it? I'm not arguing with you."
I absolutely understand.
You understand it now? Okay, that's what you should have did before you went to Trenton. You should have understood it, and you should have known. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Good evening. Richard Salk in Hackensack, New Jersey. If I could change the subject slightly. John, I ask you to consider the situation regarding the alleged conflict of interest regarding the SRL vote. Are you going anywhere with that?
Yes, I am. We're going to put it in front of the local Ethics Board to get a decision.
Do you want me to comment to Mr. Salk?
You may elaborate. Sure.
Mr. Salk, we reviewed the potential conflict. We advise the council of seeking advisory opinion from the local finance board concerning all potential conflicts of interest regarding--
It's fair.
--certain members and any interest regarding the Board of Education.
There's hope for you yet, young Mr. Salk.
Thank you, sir.
Good to hear. And John, would you like to bet a dinner that I'm going to be right on this?
I'll think about it.
Get back to me on it, all right?
Depends on where it is, right?
All right. At the last meeting I attended, at the end, Kathy, you had some remarks regarding the elephant in the room that wasn't in the room at the time. And I think unfortunately, use the expression, political enemies were stirring the pot on this. If you look, if you look at the roster of the Library Board, these are not political players. We know who the political players are, and we're looking at each other, aren't we?
That final comment, Rick, was not about the library. That was an additional comment, and I said, "I have another comment, but I'll read."
There's no--
I wasn't about the library.
Okay. It said, well, maybe I'll go back and listen to it again, but I'm not going to waste my time on it. When the city manager went through the PowerPoint regarding the spending, you know what? I was actually proud that we're spending the most. That speaks well of us. I remember, because I'm getting so old, 1989, they were going to close down what became the Cultural Arts Center, that used to be the Broadway Library. John, I'm sure you remember.
Yes.
Had a room just like this. Same situation. Hackensack, people of Hackensack love their libraries. They don't love councils all the time. They don't love boards of ed -- they don't love lawyers all the time, but they love their libraries. Don't assume a bunker mentality. Your desires to cut the budget, to trim, I don't think anyone questions it's appropriate. Not in this instance. Restore the funds, at least $100,000, you heard Mrs. Lynn discuss. I'm going to mispronounce. I'll turn to Mr. Marselia for help, because he went to all those masses. Vox popula -- vox popularis, vox, do you? Voice of the people is the voice of God. Restore the funds. It's what the people want. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mark Stein. I'm here to talk about the library. I think I have a unique perspective on that issue. I was honored by the residents of this community to serve on this council, not on your council, but on the council that I served on for 16 consecutive years. For many of those years, I served as the council liaison to the Library Board, and I had a very unique perspective in learning more about a library in a town that I had grown up in for close to 70 years now. My perspective is, having worked with a very, very passionate board, and some of those members are still serving on that board, they are dedicated to this unique and very historic library. The one thing that you need to keep in mind, and I know the difficult answers when it comes to looking at budgets, I sat there, I know. This is an institution that serves a whole wide variety of residents, from the youngest of the young to the oldest of the old. They all rely on that library. And not only residents of Hackensack, but other residents who use it as a sharing point. So I ask you, and again, I looked at what was presented tonight. This is the lowest funding since 19 -- what was it? 10, 19, I'm sorry, 2010. We all know, wages go up, salaries go up, expenses go up. Please, review this budget again on behalf of the library and all of the 42,000 residents of this community. Thank you.
Good evening, young man.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Salerno, and I'm from 77 Ross Avenue, and I am an eighth-grade student at Hackensack Middle School. I am also the president of the National Junior Honor Society. I am here this evening to speak to you about your plans to decrease funding to Johnson Public Library. Our public library has been a valuable part of my life and that of our community for many years. The library provides many important programs, along with an extensive collection of books. Over the years, I and many of my fellow students have relied on the library to provide resources for our various class projects. The librarians have always been helpful, friendly, knowledgeable, and eager to help. I personally have enjoyed being involved in the summer reading program. I have enjoyed the many displays in the glass cases in the lobby. I have also enjoyed some of the programs and movies presented there. I remember, as a first grader at Fairmount Elementary School, walking to the library so that me and my class could all get our first library card. If not enough funds are provided to the library, they will have to scale back many of the programs our community has come to rely on. Where else can you go and read a book for free? I have brought this petition, signed by 802 fellow students at Hackensack-- --to continue to fund our library so that more people can enjoy the library like I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Brian Zieglehofer. I live at 224 Lincoln Street in Hackensack. So I'm here today to kind of further elaborate on what Jacob just said. So I am the Vice President of the Hackensack Middle School National Junior Honor Society, and as Jacob mentioned, we have started a school-wide petition to prevent budget cuts to the Johnson Public Library. However, those 802 students are not the only people who care. There are many people from the elementary schools and the high schools who did not sign the petition that rely on their resources just as much as we do, not to mention all the people that come from other towns to get books using the Buckles website. There are even a lot of parents that go to the library. Now, just out of curiosity, how many people here tonight love the library and support All those people that just raised their hands are not just some kids that go to a middle school. Those are eligible adults that can make a difference and that support it just as much as we do. So if we, as a community, love and need the library, why take that away from us? If, hold on, if we all depend on it, why potentially close it for a dream that may not work in the future? I'm not saying that it is a right to abandon a project that you are using the money for. I'm just saying that you should get the money from something that is not relied on by most of Bergen County. And for my own personal benefit and as a concluding question, I know a little bit about what you plan to spend the money for, but if you can just elaborate on what you're going to use the money for and how it benefits us as a community, that would just be helpful. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Unama Wabwaku, and I live at Arcadia Road in Hackensack. I, yeah, I guess. I am very passionate about libraries for many reasons, one of which being that I have personally set up four different libraries in my lifetime, so I know what it means to lose funding for an important public fixture as a library. I noticed that Hackensack as a whole, actually, we're doing much better than certain towns like Lodi, didn't have any municipal funding for their libraries, but still, the thought of losing such a substantial chunk of funding for this institution worries me, because, one, I noticed that our library is an historical building, and it maintains an archive that's very impressive. It would be a horrible shame to lose access to those kind of documentation that we have stored and archived at the Hackensack Library. It provides a safe place for youngsters like these two amazing young fellows who just spoke now. I can't get over it. Honestly, I cannot. I just can't get past these two. They're amazing. And I would really hate to see that the educational services that the library provides, especially in terms of technology, I would hate to see those kind of, that kind of funding for those kinds of things go away. I have a 70-year-old mother who thinks she's 107, who won't use her technology. I get upset with her, and I finally said, "Okay, you know what? I'm taking you to the library for someone to teach you how to use your Kindle. Mom, just use the Kindle. We bought it for you to use." I take her there, and she is comfortable in that environment, learning how to come up to date with current technology. That's an amazing facility, and again, it would be an awful shame to lose that. And on a personal level, the library provided me something very important. I'm holding here in my hand my ID card for FDU University. I went back to college after a 20-year hiatus, and the only reason why I feel, why I felt adequately prepared to get back into academia was the facilities I was able to find at the Hackensack Public Library. Unlike Mr. Stein, who's been a member of the Hackensack community for 60 years, I've only been here for a little over two and a half. But the library was the first place I looked for when I moved to Hackensack. I mean, literally, I put down my suitcases in my house. The next day, I was looking for the Hackensack Public Library, and I found it. And I have been consistently going there ever since. It's something that is dear to my heart, to see the facilities and the provisions that are made for the library, and to see, even the thought of losing even a portion of that, oh, no, I can't even, I can't even imagine it. I don't honestly know what the funds were being appropriated for in favor of, but I would really ask that you perhaps reconsider this. I mean, if you take off, you can't give us back all the funding. Not that much should be taken away. I mean, a reasonable proportion, if you could give it back to the library to make sure that these facilities and these services and these amenities remain accessible to the community of Hackensack, it would mean a lot. It would really mean a lot. There are people who walked here in the rain to be here. I'm one of them. Because it meant that much to me. I really wish that this could be, this proposal could be reconsidered. Thank you so much.
I'm Dan Kirsch, 429 Colonial Terrace in Hackensack, and I'd just like to share a moment of personal history that goes back a pretty long way. Goes back, in fact, to 1940s, when my family moved to Hackensack. My father, having borrowed every penny he could from friends, having gathered everything from family, and with the help of the GI Bill, bought a house on Heath Place for a little over $17,000, and opened a store on Main Street that was owned by Archie Rose and therefore called Roses, R-O-S-E apostrophe S. Well, he didn't have the money to change the name to Kersh's, so, but he did have the money to pull the apostrophe out and name the store Roses with no apostrophe and use the rose as his brand. And that store lasted a long time on Hackensack and expanded into some others. But it was in 1948 that we physically moved to the house in Hackensack. And in 1949, when I turned seven years old, I went to the Johnson Public Library in the summer reading program, and I have a certificate to prove, because my mother saved it and my wife loves me-- --and it says, "Daniel Kirsch of Fairmount School has read 19 books from the Johnson Free Public Library from June to October 1949 and is hereby entitled to this reading Now, I will tell you, it sounds really cute and nice and all, but there's no way my family could have afforded 19 books for me to read that summer, not even close to it. Without that library, I wouldn't have been able to read any books, or maybe one or two or some borrowed books. But I had the library. And this young man who was here, who spoke before me, also a product of the Johnson Library Summer Reading Program, and if we cut those things, who are we hurting? We're hurting the young men and women who don't have access to the resources. We're hurting the people who can't afford the books, and nowadays, it's not just books. Now it's technology, it's the internet, it's all of those things. Those are the people that get hurt. And at the other end of the spectrum, we heard from the young lady who spoke just before me about her grandmother and a Kindle learning technology at the library. about her grandmother and a Kindle learning technology at the library. And I want you to think about the grandparents who may not be technologically astute, but go to the library's programs and learn how to use the computers so that they can Skype and now I think WeChat and do all those other things in Facebook with their grandchildren who are spread out across the country. And those, and you know it and I know it because we've walked the streets and we've run doorbells and we've talked to those seniors on fixed incomes and we know how tight they are for funds. And without those library resources, they wouldn't be able to do those things. Those are the people that are getting hurt by this. Those are the people, and when we cut the library, the people, the merchants, the Javas Brewing that you mentioned right next to the library, the people that come to the library for his great pistachio muffins. How many of them are going to be coming? That hurts him. It hurts Hackensack. It hurts all of us. Now, I listened to the tape, uh, the video of the last council meeting. And I'm somebody that always looks for a compromise and you know that. And I heard Deputy Mayor talk about how they wanted to give, the council wanted to give the library what, to hold the line with what they'd had the year before. Now somehow, that message didn't get through. And whether it's a failure of communication on whoever's part it was, it doesn't matter now. What matters now is I heard the president of the board say that they were willing to live with that first initial reduction, but not the second one. There's a middle ground here. Let's reach for it. Let's do it. And last note, John, Dave, Leo particularly, you know, because you've worked with the kids, you know how important it is to have a place for those kids to go after school, particularly those middle school years, so that they're not out on the streets. You know about the sports programs, but you know sports is only part of it. And one of the great things about all of you is that you've emphasized the academics as well as the athletics. Don't cut the academics short. Give those kids a chance. If you don't mind, I would like to pass on this certificate to the young fellow graduate.
I'm Richard Serbo on Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. Uh, just to follow up on Mr. Kirsch's reading, uh, I think it was the great actor Peter O'Toole who said, "The only way to learn anything is to spend lots of time alone in quiet reading." So I just wanted to, it came to my mind while he was saying about all his reading. Uh, we do learn things from books and, um, just a quick little Hackensack history for everyone. Uh, during revolutionary times, uh, right here in Hackensack, you know, there was revolution in the air. You know, things were going on. The, the British were still in Manhattan and still had a stronghold there. And, um, Hessian soldiers were sent up the Hackensack River and, uh, under the cover of night occupied the green down in downtown Hackensack. And in the morning, the residents of Hackensack were in an uproar. Wow, they took over the green. Hessian soldiers. And the Hessians decided to burn the Hackensack townspeople's homes down. Now, all those homes around the court area, there were small homes, uh, common people's homes. And so they, they burnt those homes down. So, a little more history, Benjamin Franklin, one of our founders, is given credit for starting the first library in Philadelphia. And, uh, before that, there really wasn't much. It took so long for books to come from Great Britain. Yeah, we couldn't wait for books coming, so let's build a library. And I'm not sure of the name. I think it may have been a Logan or somewhere, Philadelphia, though. And the only other libraries at the time were Harvard, Yale, you know, libraries for the privileged. I think there was an Athenaeum in Boston, but there were no books for, you know, common people. People that wanted to learn, wanted to improve their lives. And, um, so the library's part of our founding. It's, it's, so, so is local government. So why not stick with what we learned from our founders and, uh, fund the library? I think everyone is, uh, supportive here. All the library personnel are here. I love seeing them. They're all so great. You should get to know them all. They're all terrific people. I don't want to end on a sour note, but, uh, Mr. Tross, uh, sort of financial comparisons of other communities and blah, blah, blah. You know, I didn't hear anything from him, uh, when it came to, uh, police and fire funding and how they were compared because they're, they're the highest-funded departments in the United States. So, I mean, if we're going to cut the library, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there was never any talk of cuts of other departments. No one ever stood up to any of the increases that are sort of unquestioned every year. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much and, uh, have a great night.
Catherine Canarosi, 29 Franklin Street, Hackensack. I am a librarian. And I've had the pleasure of helping a local author at our reference desk. And when she heard about the budget, she asked that I speak her words because she couldn't join us this evening. As a resident of Hackensack, I'd like to bring to your attention my perspective as a published author of two books and the importance of adequate funding for our library system. My books, on the subject of hearing loss and cochlear implants, have been very helpful to people seeking this detailed first-person information. I'm often asked where my books are available and specifically if they are available in the libraries. Libraries are an essential resource in the community and a means of gaining important and often life-changing information. Our library directly impacts the quality of life of this community. Adequate funding is absolutely essential. Arlene Romoff, 140 Euclid Avenue.
Hi, I'm Babette Smith and I work at the Johnson Public Library. I'm known as Miss Babette. And I have brought you petitions from the younger set. They have worked every day after school. And there's their signatures. Very future voters. Very future voters. They're also, um, part of us keeping to our motto, which is enriching generations. If you give us cuts, we're not going to be able to enrich any generations. And these are the people that are going to be choosing your nursing homes, so.
I don't think I could follow that one, Mayor.
No nursing home jokes, please. No nursing home jokes from you, please.
Uh, you know what? I'm not too far there myself, Mr. Mayor, although I think you got about, what, forty or fifty years on me?
No nursing home jokes.
Tonight's, tonight's is his birthday.
Happy birthday, Amel.
Where is he?
I don't want that on my time.
I didn't start it yet. Are you ready?
I, I am ready. First, let me say, uh, Jason Nunnamaco, Prospect Avenue. She walked out on me? Open, ladies and gentlemen, open and transparent government at action, Rose Greenman. She was too busy back in May, June trying to save Anthony Rotino's job and Tom Amorato's job that the so-called supposed alleged absentee councilwoman there did not tell the library board of the pending budget cuts to the library. Mayor, let me ask you a question. How difficult is that job that Rose Greenman couldn't do it? Because all these people should have been here in May and June when they could have actually done something to stop these cuts. She probably missed those, those library meetings, much like she's probably missed a half dozen meetings since May. She hasn't gone her way and now she has once again sunk to a new low of leaving the dais when I, probably Regina, and Mr. Gelber, standing right behind me, probably don't have much nice things to say about her. But ladies and gentlemen, I do have that transcript myself of that finance board here. And she's a liar because it's right here. She spoke out against these police officers. She spoke out against the city's attempts to save financial ruin only to save Mr. Rotino's job. Her and her small minority Rotino coalition, as I referred to in the past. She's a joke, she's an embarrassment, and she's a disgrace. Proving once again, right here this evening. How do you, John, how did you leave that dais?
I had no answer for you, Mr. Nunnamaco.
You could call me Jason. We've known each other long enough, even though we're on opposite political sides.
I, I did hear the door slammed.
Did you hear? Not the first time a woman has stormed a room when I've entered it, so I'm not going to take it personally.
I did hear that, one place.
I'm still here.
Oh, you know, Kathy, you know, you and I have a love-hate relationship.
Love, love, come on.
Where's Amel? Happy birthday, Amel. Mayor.
What a way to spend your birthday, huh?
I ha- I, I have to be somewhat critical of you this evening. To put a curfew on this meeting, Mr. Mayor, I do find it's a little bit disappointing. You know, open. Op, I have five minutes, Mr. Eisen, and I believe I have a First Amendment right to use that any way I like. You may not like it, but I got it. And I'm well familiar with the First Amendment. Ask Mr. Morris. Now, John, putting a curfew on the meeting, myself, Mr. Stein, Mr. Abellino, have been at a Board of Education meeting until three o'clock in the morning. And we let everyone who wanted to speak, speak. Putting a cap because you probably have an unfriendly audience this evening? I don't think it's right, Mr. Mayor.
I don't look at this as an unfriendly audience, but.
Well, whatever, however you want to look at it, they're being critical of certain decisions which should have been, they should have been here in May, June if someone was doing their job. But they're not. So maybe for the next budget cycle, we, you can reexamine. But to put a cap, uh, uh, on the hours of meeting, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right. You know, I'll defer to Mr. Morris if it's even legal. Uh, I presume that, that it probably is, but I don't think that sends a message. And, and before I, I, I end my time here, let me say those two students are everything that's great about our school system.
Absolutely.
Welcome back. Maybe you should donate that stipend back you get every month for the time you're missing at, at these meetings. And as Vice President of the Board of Education, Mayor, I couldn't be any prouder in any program that produces children like that. Every single dime this city spends is well worth it. And anytime Mr. Kirsch and Mr. Marsaglia are on the same side of an issue involving children, that's the side to be on because that is absolutely the right side because these two gentlemen have shown nothing but true dedication to these children for over fifty years.
Regina DePasqua, Parker Avenue. Um, it's clear, perfectly clear, everyone loves the library. And I am very happy to hear Ms. Flint say, "Not in danger of closing." That is, that's great. And not so happy, and the reason everybody is here tonight, that there was a lack of communication. That is the crux of this. There was a lack of communication. Now, last night, when I tried to ask questions of Ms. Greenman about her presence at the budget, her knowledge of the cuts at the time of the budget, did she vote on the city budget? She told me that she would not go into the gutter to answer me. That was her response to me. Very professional, Ms. Greenman, very professional. Then she called me a liar. But she didn't have the integrity to say what she thought I lied about when I asked her. She, this councilwoman called a resident a liar, said, "I'm in the gutter." This is, this is what we're dealing with here. On a regular basis, this is what we're dealing with here. But she, she couldn't tell me what I said that was a lie. The only thing I can think of was I said that there was supposed to be a second meeting with the library and it, with Mr. Rotino, and that did not happen. Mrs. Kirsch, I believe you said that at, there was a meeting in February? There was only one meeting. There was no second meeting.
No, and we were never informed at all of any cuts until mid-July when.
There was only the initial meeting. There was no second meeting. That, that's what I think. And at that first meeting in February, Mr. Rotino asked the library to hold the line, but never got back to them. There's a communication breakdown. But I am not lying. The second meeting did not happen, is what I said. There was a total breakdown as far as the liaison who is supposed to help two organizations work together and provide information to each other. That is the definition of a liaison. You failed miserably. The library needs were not communicated to the city and the cities' budget plans were not communicated to the library. You had one job, Ms. Greenman, one job. You were there to communicate that information. The library board says they didn't know. The city is taken by surprise that this is happening. You are right in the middle of it because it was your job. And you're telling me that's not your job as liaison to communicate the information? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is I'm being scapegoated.
You're the liaison. It was your job.
No back and forth, please.
You're not a scapegoat. You didn't do your job. You failed. Excuse me, this is my time.
No back and forth, please.
This is my time. You were on the finance committee. You were involved in the budget process. You were at the budget presentation and you voted for the budget. But you never told the library that there was an additional cut. You never told them. They say they did not know. Are they lying too? Are you going to call the library board liars? Because you called me a liar. They said they did not know. Whose job was it to communicate that? Yours, Ms. Greenman. One job, one job. No reasonable person, excuse me, would, would think otherwise. It was your job. If you don't think that was your job, please replace her as the liaison. Please, because she did not do her job and she does not think that's her job. Excuse me, I'm speaking. You're being rude. I only have five minutes. You get all the time you want. Okay? If you were involved with the finances and the budget, you should know. You should know. You should also know that this was a done deal. There is no two hundred extra, two hundred thousand extra right now to give to the library. It's not there. This year's budget is done. Next year, work on it and, and see. But if you think that, oh, yeah, let, let's write a check, if you're even going to think about saying that just to appease people that you messed up the job in the first place, you're crazier than I thought. Because a councilwoman should know this. But moving forward for 2015, Mr. Tross has, has assured us that there will be communication and hopefully with a new liaison who knows that it's her job to communicate. We have him who will work, he will work along with the CFO and work with the library and other city departments to work out the 2015 budget. There will be communication.
Do something about it.
Is she over five minutes?
This kind of behavior.
Excuse me, top the, top.
Besides, human beings. If this is horrible and you must do something about it.
What did I say? She didn't do her job. She's a councilwoman. If she can't handle the heat, get out of the kitchen. I asked you last night for a vote of no confidence. A vote of no confidence for Ms. Greenman. I'm not her admirer. It's her job to do something. Is my five minutes up?
Yes.
Do your job. You're, you're, you're unprofessional. You have no integrity, no credibility. You're a real liar.
I know Mr. Marsaglia my entire adult life, I worked with him at the Rotary, I know that this gentleman knows how to make a dollar stretch as far as a dollar can stretch, and I also know that he is a very, very prudent fiduciary, and if he says something, I'm taking it to the bank. And I know that the communication gap was not going to be on his side here. Ms. Greenman, and that's all I have to say about the library tonight, I'm sorry if anyone doesn't want to hear anything else, but it is also a council meeting, and I'm on the side of the library, but there's also a few issues I've been waiting for from Ms. Greenman. The Oprah request that you never answered in the proper manner, all those emails, I'm going to publish them tonight, 126 pages worth of them that you never produced, and there's probably a reason that you didn't want to produce them. I asked you very specifically at a meeting once, if you thought Mr. LeBros was ill-suited to be the mayor, or if you had issue with the way that he handled things. It's very clear from these emails, John's a coward, always has been, always will be, look at his history as a councilman, doesn't talk, not a peep through his four years, won't say anything unless someone else puts it together for him, I mean, there's, you know, 126 pages of this, of this real fun stuff, but I'm going to put that up tonight. My real question for you tonight is, because you guys want to point the fingers at who the politicians are, can you explain, because it's in one of your emails, can you explain to all the residents of the city of Hackensack who Tom Tucci is? I'm sorry, keep your mic, I don't know if it's on.
I believe he's a manager, city manager in Verona.
Was he potentially going to be the city manager, or some other, some other appointee here in the city of Hackensack?
No.
Okay, because I know that you spoke with Tom, who's just such a great resource for you, wanted to give you names of someone to be the city manager. He does have someone for us, in capitals, does, he does have someone for us. But I told Kathy, but she said that John and Leo don't want to go back on his promises to Lyakino. Since you guys are the politicians and want to make deals, maybe John, maybe Kathy, maybe you guys want to, John, Leo, maybe you guys want to share with us what your deal with Mr. Lyakino was.
I don't know, was it, number one, I didn't say there was a deal, you're saying there was a deal.
Oh, no, no, Ms. Greenman's saying that there's a deal, so I, I just want to know what that deal is.
It doesn't mean there was a deal.
Maybe you guys had a deal?
We told Mr. Loiakino, everybody knows we'd give him, we'd give him, you know, some time, and I don't even know timeframes you're talking about, so I'd really happen to know all the information to answer your question.
All right, Ms. Greenman, his propaganda speaks volumes, more of him than of you, he's an opportunist who will do and say nothing to achieve his end, this is all about you, John. That loyalty, hard work, and dedication to the cause that you have shown to him in the slate are worthless in his eyes, and he has reached a pinnacle, or so he thinks. John, I feel sorry if you think being the mayor is the pinnacle of your life. You had kids, you have, you have a wonderful life, I'm sorry if, if, if maybe you think that's the pinnacle. But he is a snake in the grass, and I'm actually grateful for this revelation of, of who he really is came so early in this process. Forewarned and forearmed. You go, you like to go put together police reports of people making threats against you because they make these, you know...
Are you referring to your father?
Oh, yeah, which, that, that's, that's, that's going to be a whole matter of a whole mother litigation on common law to get access to that, because your friends over there at the county don't want to release that one either. But that forearm thing, John, maybe you want to go downstairs and file a harassment, I don't know. Hold on, where's, I got one I really wanted to ask you about here, and I'm sorry, I've been so busy today, but, all right, here's that email that I really want to ask about, the one that Mr. Morris really didn't want to disclose, and I can see why. You're an attorney, what's attorney-client privilege? You probably shouldn't send things that you talk to your attorney about to, to other people. You're the bulk of the claims here, coming from Ms. Heck, some of those emails you sent, and they were pretty bad. But this one hasn't come to light before now. Dear Juan, that's our labor attorney, and for some reason you felt inappropriate to send this to a third party who's a resident and not covered by the attorney-client privilege, even though you probably should have been sending this email in the first place. Below, please find a copy of the flurry of emails that transpired Friday afternoon. Debbie started the ball rolling by compelling to Tom and Kathy and myself having the temerity to question her. We felt compelled to respond, because if unchallenged, her recitation of events would become the entire truth. It's a tremendous waste of time and energy and money. Why she feels compelled to complain to Tom about us trying to do our job is incomprehensible to me or any other rational person. After all, she serves at the pleasure of the council. This is not her first time challenging or complaining to Tom, you don't have a rule, we've been through this. Debbie Heck is competitive, very defensive, and resistant to suggestions or corrections. She is impossible to work with, and we have no confidence in her. As exemplified below, she tries to undermine us in every aspect of our work. We have to lance the boil. That's as far as I wanted to get. What did you mean by that? Snakes in the grass, what's lance the boil? Can you tell me why you would be telling your attorney that you want to lance a boil of a hard-working, longtime, dedicated city employee, which now, this email, just like the rest of them, all they do is help Ms. Heck's case. You are killing the city. What you did in Trenton, what you did here, what you did with the library, the miscommunication, you are killing our city. You obviously can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen.
Mr. Gelber, your five minutes is up.
And just very quickly, I just want to commend these two young gentlemen, because, because, you know, I, I stood there and I listened to everything that they had to say, and I listened very intently, because it's really, I'm so, I'm proud to be a product of Hackensack school system, always have been. I went to the Johnson Public Library when I was, when I was a child. Just like that, gentlemen, I was the president of the Honor Society. Keep coming back, and I'm so happy, and honestly, I'm very proud to have seen you get up here tonight, because it reminded me so much of when I was a kid. The first, the first thing that I did when I was your age, I sent letters to the editor, and that was the first thing that I did. I got involved by sending letters to the editor. Keep coming back, sign the petitions, and keep coming back. Now, Ms. Greenman, you want to give us some answers on what you meant by lance the boil and how you're treating the city?
Mr. Gelber, your time is up, we have people behind you waiting.
I didn't think so.
Thank you, sir.